Call meeting to order, Pledge of Allegiance, Councilmember Johnson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Larky?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Davidson?
Here.
Councilmember Pryon?
Here.
Councilmember Lawson?
Here.
Councilmember Richardson?
Here.
Councilmember McCallum?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
We have a form. D, personal appearances. We're going to go out of order a little bit, so the first one is the Paternal Order of Eagles.
How y'all doing tonight?
Good.
We are here because we took over the cruise nights from Parks and Rec this year, and a lot of the cruisers, and I know that a couple of members here were asked about an October one, and we did not have that slated on our original request, and so we're here tonight to ask for one more on the 25th of October, so we need to close the street down. I think the times are the same as what Jeff said you said on the amendment.
Anybody got any questions? Because I know he has to leave, that's why we're doing him first. So anybody got any questions of him? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item two, that's me. So I'm gonna read something, and then I'm gonna get up and talk for a minute. Missouri Municipal League has earned, I'm gonna say her name, Julie Porter, our Deputy City Clerk, has earned the prestigious designation of Certified Municipal Officer from Missouri Municipal League's Municipal Governance Institute. The Municipal Government Institute was created under the direction of the Missouri Municipal League Board of Directors to provide training program focused on important areas of municipal officials and professional staff needed for success. In order to achieve the higher honor, a municipal officer must complete sixteen credit hours of training conducted or endorsed by the Missouri Government Institute. So, and I believe she has did thirty-plus hours of training for this, so. Told her she's gotta do a twenty-minute speech, too.
And I did carry that award around for you, and it's significantly heavier.
So an honor from the council to you, Certified Municipal Official Julie Porter. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, just thank you to the council for always, you know, offering these opportunities for training, and we can provide better service for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Still have nineteen minutes.
All right, the next thing is kinda me, too. If you guys remember, I don't know if you do or not, but back April, early April, my name got, started getting called on the radio, One on One the Fox, and saying they wanted to get ahold of me, and my past history, I thought, you know, somebody's pranking me, so. So I ignored it for a couple of weeks, and then people kept calling me and kept calling me. So I finally got ahold of them and met with them. They, I'll let them say what they did, so we got Sparks and Lox from One on One the Fox.
Hello, thank you. Can I take it up here?
Yeah.
Oh, sweet. Hi. How's it going, councilmembers? You guys are doing the real job here. This is pretty cool. Look, I'm Sparks, this is Lox, and this is Doug Medlock. We're from One on One the Fox. We did issue Mayor Larky a challenge, unbeknownst to him. I don't think he wanted to do it, but he's been a good sport. We appreciate it. I, I, look, I'm just-
He won't look directly at you, but other than that.
Oh, I will, I will.
We came here with a mission, and that is to, actually, I'm not, I'm taking all the credit. This is all Lox here, go ahead.
Okay, so every day we like to shout out to our favorite cities that are listening to us, and we were shouting out to Belton, and I was just very excited about it, and he said, "Let's shout out to Belton," and I said, "Belton, I'm belting it out for Belton," and they were like, "Wow, that could be a theme song," and so we looked online and saw that you guys did not have a theme song. So then we had Mayor Larky on the show. We asked him all his favorite things about the city, what he loves about it. We had a bunch of people call in and tell us what they love about your city, and so I took those, talked to Doug, our resident snot rocket rock star over here, about creating a song, and I wrote what Mayor Larky and the folks of Belton said about your city, and if you don't mind, we will try our very best. I'm not a professional singer, and I will need the lyrics, I'm sorry. Oh, you're gonna leave that? Okay, then you might need to turn the volume up on that one. Very, I'm very nervous. Main Street's got a beat, you know, storefront's burning with a golden glow, DMV's a breeze, no line, a million reasons I'll tell you why, I'm belting, I'm belting it out for Belton. Oh, the sun's out strong and the parks run wide, Wallace Park slides reach the sky, belting, I'm belting it out for Belton. Once you're here, you'll feel like home. Neon buzz from the highway strip, burgers, flicks, take your pick, golfing under a jet stream sky, swinging clubs where jets flew by, I'm belting, I'm belting it out for Belton. Try to match our zip across the map, but you'll feel the pullback like a thunderclap, belting, I'm belting it out for Belton. Aw, thank you. Aw, thank you so much.
Are you kidding me?
We, Sparks was the first one to tell me how incredible your DMV is, and now we all go to it specifically. I live in Westport, he lives over by Overland Parks, and we all drive to your DMV specifically. Very helpful, got my passport and my real ID now.
Secrets out.
Secrets out, yeah. Wallace Park has apparently the best slides, the double-decker is apparently an absolute winner. Having all the new, like, national businesses on the outside strip to bring people into Belton is very exciting. We also talked about the golf course and how it was given to you guys by the Air Force, and so we love that you're golfing under a jet stream sky where the jets were once, and we hope that we encapsulated it, because when you're here, you do feel like home, and even though we're not from Belton, we love coming here every time we get a chance to, so thank you guys so much. Do you have anything else?
Uh, yeah, I just wanna add, my thighs are burning. But Mayor Larky, do you wanna say something here?
I'm good.
Nothing? You sure?
I'm good, you did it all.
Hey, man, we really appreciate you guys making this happen. We will be talking about this tomorrow on the radio, and we will be recording like an official version for the, for the city of Belton, okay?
Rock and roll.
Thank you so much.
Uh, what's our money at, what time, Lox, do you think, eight fifteen?
It's eight forty.
Eight forty.
Just to make sure.
Yeah, eight forty tomorrow, we'll talk about it.
Seven thirty, seven forty, seven fifty.
Seven fifty.
Dogs that come in at eight forty, I wanna make sure.
Yeah, yeah, we have dogs.
Thank you, City Council.
Before you leave, can I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
Have you gonna put a spot in for him to sing along with you?
Oh, we would love to have him.
Are you kidding me? Yeah. Mayor Larky?
He's a very good singer.
Oh, yeah, I can tell. All right, thanks, guys, appreciate it.
I still think someone's out to get me. All right, where are we at? All right.
Come on up. Did it get turned off?
Don't be shy, come on up, guys.
Buckle up, phone down, October 2025. Whereas the city of Belton recognizes that distracted driving and failure to wear seat belts continue to be a major cause of preventable deaths and serious injuries on Missouri highways, and whereas the Missouri Coalition for Roadway Safety developed the Buckle Up Phone Down Challenge to encourage all drivers and passengers to take personal responsibility for safety by wearing seat belts every time they travel and putting their phones down while driving. And whereas, since its inception, the Buckle Up Phone Down Challenge has been adopted by numerous cities, counties, schools, businesses, and organizations across Missouri as a public commitment to safer roadways. And whereas, the city of Belton desires to lead by example in promoting traffic safety within the community, protecting residents, visitors, employees through responsible driving behavior. And whereas, the city encourages schools, civic groups, and businesses throughout Belton to join in promoting the Buckle Up Phone Down Challenge message through events, social media, and a daily action. Now, therefore, Norman K. Larky, Senior Mayor of the City of Belton, does hereby support the Buckle Up Phone Down Challenge and join the Missouri Coalition for Roadway Safety and Permitting Seat Belt Use and Distraction-Free Driving. We urge all citizens to take Modoc's Buckle Up Phone Down Pledge and model safe driving habits. In witness whereof, he has hereunto set his hand and caused the seal of the city to be affixed in the city of Belton, Missouri, this fourteenth day of October in the year of our Lord 2025.
Hold on, guys. One more photo up here. No, I, I'm just a mentor now, I'm not part of this, except as a mentor.
Ask him some questions.
We just appreciate you being here and, and, you know, spreading the message of keeping distracted drivers off of the road, so.
I will, I will brag for a minute. They have traction t-shirts on, that's the leadership conference they go to every summer we take students. Usually, we take a team, or most of the schools in the state take ten to twelve students. You get a Spirit Award every day for how you participate, how you work with others, and our little group of two won the Spirit Award for the, one of the days we were there on their own, so. And they also, when they go, this is their leader while they're there, so Officer Myers, the first year we asked him to go, not so much, he's all in. He understands just how important this program is for everybody, so. Okay, thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
All right, item five, December sixth, 2025, Mayor's Christmas Tree Lighting, Street Closure.
Good evening, City Council. Tonight, later on on the agenda, you'll see a resolution for street closure for the Mayor's Christmas Tree Lighting. It will be December Saturday, December sixth. The street closure is from three to seven, the event is from five to seven. It will be the two and three hundred blocks of Main Street, a small portion of the alley, and a small portion of Chestnut, and I believe the map is attached to the resolution. That is about all I have on that, unless there's any questions.
Go ahead.
I have a quick question, is it the same tree that usually gets done up with lights?
Okay.
The map looked like-
Yes.
It could've been a different one.
All right, anybody else? All right, item E, professional appearances, Emergency Service Board Discussion, presented by Chris Turnbull, ESB Board Chair, and Jimmy Odom, ESB Board Belton Representative.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, it's great to be in a different city hall for tonight. I was at ours last night, so it's, it's nice to see a change, and I'm really jealous. You guys have your own song now. That's pretty awesome, I gotta tell ya. They did a great job with that. So I wanna thank you for inviting Board Member Odom and I to your meeting this evening to talk a little bit about the ESB. And I guess the best way to describe our responsibilities is to talk about how we were formed and why. As you know, in 1983, 911 was adopted in the Kansas City Metropolitan Area, originally covering six counties on both the Kansas and Missouri sides. It's been expanded to nine counties, and that 911 system is run by the Mid-America Regional Council. They have all the servers, they have all the technology, they have all of the responsibility for any upgrades or updates that they have for the 911 system. In 1992, the, there was a group formed here in Cass County to fund 911, and originally, the, the way that it was funded in 1983 is that there was an assessment by the Mid-America Regional Council to each individual county based upon the population of that county. And so that, and the funding for that was set up on up to fifteen cents per one dollar for every dollar you spent on your landline for your phone at home. And that's how the original funding was established. There was a, a 911 tax on your landline. By, oh, the late nineties, when we began to see changes in the use of phones and the development of cellphones, that kind of capped out. And by 2000, about nine, 2008, 2009, we saw it begin to diminish. And we knew at some point that we were gonna have to figure out a way to pay for 911, because it wasn't getting any cheaper, with all the upgrades that were coming along, and the Mid-America Regional Council had to transfer that responsibility for that compensation back to the users of the 911 system. And so that, that had the PSAP managers, and that's the Public Safety Answering Points, there are five here in the county, Belton, Raymore, Pleasant Hill, Harrisonville, and the Sheriff's Department. And each of those has divided responsibilities for different jurisdictions. The Sheriff's Office has most of the responsibility, and I'll show you on a chart here in a little bit how that's divided up. But we began to talk to the commission who was in charge of the distribution of the tax funding for paying for 911, and all we had was a 911 coordinator. And that, the latest one, and who transitioned to the ESB, was Robin Teeman. She actually worked for the county at the time and was liaison between the PSAP Managers Board, Advisory Board, and the County Commission. During the process of that funding initially coming in and a surplus gaining momentum initially with the landline tax, they, the commissioners adjusted it from time to time, never reached the fifteen cent maximum. It always kinda hovered around five or six cents per dollar tax that they put on the homeowners for that landline use. They could've gone up to fifteen cents, but they decided that they could fund it at that level, and they actually did create a bit of a surplus in that process. So with that surplus, they began borrowing from that to use it for other county issues, always keeping account of how that money was distributed, and knew that it was owed back to the 911 tax for payment of 911, or any systems that were taken care of. 911, in 1997, when all, just about every agency in Cass County adopted a report management system that was run by ITI initially, and later on sold to Omnigo. Omnigo was a software company similar to Cerner, they were mostly in the hospital software business. ITI was making a little R&amp;D development changes and bringing it around to give us more advantage with regard to records management, jail management system, and a, and CAD, which was the most important part, because the computer-aided dispatching is what assisted dispatchers in acquiring all of the information on a 911 call, and then ensuring that went over into the records management system so that the officers later on could write their reports and not have to replicate everything. So the 911 system continued to develop, but the, the, and I have, and I'll pass this out to you, it is a, this was given to me by the treasurer of the county recently, that kinda showed the last five years of diminishing receipts for the 911 tax from 2008 to 2012. You'll see on that, on the receipts, initially, in '08, we were receiving about 1.25 million, and by 2012, just five years later, it had diminished to 867,000. And most of the time, our bill to the Mid-America Regional Council hovered right around a million dollars, is what the Cass County's responsibility was for. So we, we knew going into about 2010, we had to think of a different way to fund it. It was about that time that the legislature wasn't willing to put the 911 tax on cellphones, although they have done it now, it's too late for us to go back and do that. They did give us the opportunity to assess up to a half-cent sales tax for the funding of 911. And in that bill, they had, they used language that I think comes to question now about the use of the, whoops, don't wanna lose the mouse here, and I'll pass that out as well. But before I do, let me kinda give you a little bit of history of that. So me being one of the PSAP managers as Police Chief over in Raymore, got with the other PSAP managers and the other members of the 911 Advisory Board, which were represented by all the disciplines of the first responders, and we talked about a couple of issues. We talked about this growing concern about funding 911, and then during that same decade, we were getting further instructions from the FCC about narrowbanding, and a lot of the agencies had different frequencies that they operated off of. I think we were at 250-something megahertz, the Belton was at like 450, we weren't talking to one another. We were trying to come up with gimmicks, and they came up with a, an ACS 4000 that Motorola created that you could tie walkie-talkies into so they could talk to one another through this system, and it, it was just very, it, it just wasn't user-friendly. So we began to talk about, okay, how do we fix both issues? The state has now given us the opportunity to, to transfer to a sales tax, but we also have this radio system problem that's lurking. And one of the things was, is that we wanted to be fully interoperable, and so we sat down and we met with a legal advisor for the county, that was Paul Campo at the time, and met with Paul to see if we could kill two birds with one stone, take care of 911, and build a radio infrastructure system, and outfit every agency within the county, forty-two entities, to be precise, which also include public works and roads and bridges, to give them all radios for their use under an 800-megahertz interoperable system that we now have in place today. And so in 2012, I retired in January in 2012, and went on the campaign trail as the former chief at Raymore, along with then Chief Person, the chief of the Belton Police Department, and the sheriff, Sheriff Deal. At the time, he was using Sheriff, who's now Sheriff Weber, as the mouthpiece for the Sheriff's Department to help promote the sales tax that came about in April 2012. Now, I'll pass that out to you, because I think it, this is what mostly comes into question. It was gonna be about a $21 million process that we were gonna need for the radio infrastructure, all the radios for all the entities that I mentioned, and then, of course, 911. That was our priority, is to come up with another funding source for 911 that would grow as the county grew naturally. And so the, what you see there is the brochure that was used, let me see if I can find my original, here's my, here's the original one that went out to the voters. On the front side, you'll see question one, and I think that's when it talks about centralized dispatches where the confusion comes in. Question one had to be worded that way because of the statute. We could not change the language of the statute, and that's why we got involved with legal, with Mid-America Regional Council, and the 911 Board for the State of Missouri. So we are, here's our goal, we are going to go to consolidation. We're virtually consolidated now in two areas. Now that we are planning the radio system, that will consolidate the radios into an interoperable system. It will also consolidate the CADs, excuse me, not the CADs, but the 911, because it was already in place as a consolidated system under the Mid-America Regional Council. The other issue was, is hopefully we could eventually get ITI or Omnigo thereafter, because what they had created in their software was a bit of a glitch that would not allow for, it would allow for the immediate transfer of 911 calls from one center, call center, to another call center, but they would have to reassemble the information that had already been gathered by the original dispatcher, which caused a bit of a delay in the delivery of 911 services. In other words, if you were out there on 49 Highway between Raymore and Belton, and you called 911 and it went to Raymore, but it was actually a Belton responsibility, until that dispatcher realized that you were in a different jurisdiction, they would then transfer you immediately to that jurisdiction, and they would actually tell the caller that, you're, you're not in our jurisdiction, I apologize, I'm gonna immediately, they would do that very quickly, it was only a matter of seconds, but that caller was then had the responsibility of rega, telling them everything over again. That has since been fixed, but I digress. Let me get back to telling the story on the sales tax issue. So if you'll turn the sheet over, you'll see that it says there, the 911 sales tax is proposed for the following reasons. And those are the reasons, if you'll read through those six points, those are the reasons that I've outlined here in my summation to you tonight, talking about what we were going to use that for. It was going to build a radio equipment and infrastructure system with five radio towers, which aren't cheap, and all of the infrastructure that supported the backbone of a radio system for the entirety of Cass County. And it was gonna give us much better coverage than the fragmented systems that had previously existed. And then we'd also made that, as you see by that, we'd made the obligation that once the infrastructure was satisfied in a seven-year lease purchase, that we would roll the tax back from one half-cent to one eighth cent to the users of the system, and that helps us maintain 911, and we're hoping that we have operating costs to help us maintain the radio infrastructure. Through the initial assimilation of the funding at the half-cent level, we have about a $10 million surplus, or in our account, that we have been wondering when it was gonna, the other shoe was gonna fall. The other shoe is getting ready to fall. What we have now is a, a request by Motorola, naturally, they have us by the throat, to spend about nine and a half million dollars to upgrade the radio system for everyone. The handhelds and the mobiles will still work on the new system, it's the infrastructure that the ESB is responsible for, and we've never denied that, is our responsibility. We're going to pay for that at no additional cost to any other jurisdictions. That is our responsibility, and we accept that. So that's about nine and a half of our 10 million that we have in surplus right now, that's gonna go toward that over the next eighteen to twenty-four months as that system is built out. The, when we rolled it back to one eighth cent- The, when we rolled it back to one eighth cent, it allowed us to, it, it now comes in at about one point two million dollars a year of, of income to pay for nine one one, and our, the maintenance warranty systems, basically, that we have on the thing, because if it breaks down, it gets very expensive. So, we paid Motorola probably about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year just in a maintenance agreement. But that gives us twenty-four seven coverage for when anything in the infrastructure breaks down. They're there, they maintain all of those little huts that all have all the technical air-conditioned equipment, they maintain our generators, emergency generators for each of those sites. But now we've learned that that one eighth cent may not be enough for the operational costs, because the last couple of years, we've had to dip into our reserves, not much, very little, about a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand to balance our budget. And so, that's kind of where we're at right now. And we feel like that, and let me add one more thing. So, in the last year, we just completed a major project to move from Omnigo to Central Square, which does have the integrated capability for all the PSAPs to talk to one another now. So, if a call comes in to Raymore, and it's decided that it's a Belton jurisdiction call, that, all of that information transfers with the caller. So, they don't have to reassemble all of that, all that dispatcher has to do is see what's needed at what location, and they can send that asset, whether it's fire, EMS, or police responsible to go to that particular site. So, that has streamlined the system significantly for us, and it's working out very well. We are still responsible for the maintenance of the CAD part of that software system, which is about a third of the cost if you add in records management, which is divided amongst each of the individual entities here, to pay for the maintenance on that part, and the jail management systems. I think Belton uses it, Cass County Sheriff's Office uses it, so they're responsible for that portion of that Central Square system. The, and this is a very simplified chart that I wanted to show you. I, I put it together the other day, actually, my wife put it together for me the other day. Thank you, dear. I wanted to give you a visual of what it looks like for this consolidated system that now exists. It's extremely resilient, it has built-in redundancy, because if you, just like what happened with Belton here recently, with the shutdown of their dispatch center, it was seamlessly transferred down to the Sheriff's Office with your dispatcher responding there to dispatch, and none of your people in your community saw anything or heard anything different. It all worked out very well, and that's the seamless nature of the consolidated system, it has a built-in redundancy to it, and we think it's very resilient and it works very well. As you can see, we're responsible for radio, CAD, and nine one one, that's a CC, ESB responsibility. Raymore has Raymore PD, South Metro Fire, Peculiar PD, and West Peculiar Fire Department responsibility. Harrisonville does their fire and, and police department. Belton does their police department and fire department. Pleasant Hill does their police department. It's kind of weird because Cass County does their fire department, but they had been over at Lee Summit. But Cass County has probably the largest bit of responsibility. They have eight fire departments that they dispatch for, five police departments, and their own sheriff's office. But as I said, it, it occurs very seamlessly, the systems work very well, and we, we actually feel like it's an economical way to run the system rather than build out a, a single brick-and-mortar facility and have, and create a whole new bureaucracy and infrastructure system that would be required for additional funding. It's, right now, you've got human resources are absorbed in each of the five PSAPs, you've got administrative responsibilities, all of those things are kind of absorbed within each of those five entities. And now that we are fully coordinating with a fully integrated radio, CAD, and nine one one system, I, I think that that has kind of been lost in the argument, that it's pretty resilient and, and very redundant in the way it operates now. And I know I passed out a lot of information to you. I also have our board orientation packet that will give you a little bit more detail about the ESB, why we exist, how we came into existence, many of the things I've talked about here this evening. And that's an orientation packet that we give to new board members who are elected, and one, and it kind of puts it all together in a nutshell. A lot of numbers in there, too, about how we operate and who has that responsibility. So, you, that's, that's a lot to look through and work through, but I wanted to provide you with that orientation packet so you, as elected officials, understood why we operate and how we operate. If I missed anything? I don't think so, Jim. Can you think of anything else? Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Go ahead.
Mr. White? Yes, can I help you, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the presentation. It's quite informative. I do, I, well, I have several, but I'll just be brief with one and let my counterparts say, because I could take all night. So, in question one, it says that one half of one percent for the purposes of providing central dispatching for fire protection, so on, so forth. How did you define, because as a voter back in two thousand and twelve, I read that, and I'm thinking, okay, one thing, but that's not what happened. And so, I'm curious how you interpret the providing central dispatching of fire protection, blah, 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 blah.
And that would fall under the term virtual consolidation, which I've mentioned previously. And that's why we included Paul Campo, who was the legal counsel for the Cass County Commissioners, and was ours for a time being, for a long time. We since retained a different council member, or a different council for our ESB, but Paul is still an advisor to us. And the Mid-America Regional Council also interpreted it as centralized or virtually consolidated because of the, all of the integrated systems that are in place, and so did the nine one one board of the state of Missouri, of which at the time, your chief was a member of that board.
I'll come back.
Okay. Well, that was, primarily was, I was, wanted to make sure I understood. So, that, as someone who did not live here at that time, I've only been here for about nine years now, and so I think I'm a, a great, you know, case in point. When I look through this and I read this and I, you know, understand central dispatching and I, you know, on the, on the, on the wording there in the question, right, and I looked through that, and let me find the exact word, because I, yeah, it says, the purpose of providing central dispatching. So, the, the ESB's point of view on that would be that central dispatching does currently occur in a virtual sense?
Yes, in a, in a consolidated sense, because consolidation is a synonym to centralization.
Sure, okay. I'm just, you know.
And we, if we could have used the word consolidated in the language, we would have, because that is exactly what we're going to do, and when we went out on our daily talks about it, that's what we told people.
I hear you. Just, we, as Raymore has the same problem, we keep growing. And, you know, part of that is, like I said, I, you, just, I'll just speak to myself instead of trying to, you know, talk about somebody else, and I'll just say that, you know, trying to explain that to the voters, especially people that may have not been present for this, this campaign literature, which is, thank you for providing that, seriously. You know, it's, just trying to explain that to the voters and the taxpayers, and, you know, when I get asked those questions, it's kind of where my thought process has been to understand what that.
No, I understand.
Looks like, so.
Thank you for the information. So, in two thousand and nineteen, the sales tax rolled back to one eighth of a cent, correct?
Correct.
And you guys are seeing about one point two million in revenue a year?
Correct.
And you're expecting a nine point five million upgrade to the Motorola infrastructure in the coming years?
Yes, well, very, very soon, we've already received some of those bids, as a matter of fact. So, I would expect that some of those things will actually become part of the new system here within the next six to twelve months.
So, that kind of upgrade, that sticker price with a ten million surplus, what are the future plans of the ESB to maintain the service with the maintenance costs and just the personnel costs? Like, what, how, what are you thinking in the future?
No, thank you for asking, because that, that was, that was actually one of my intentions, and we had a resolution that got derailed in two thousand and eighteen when the issue of centralized dispatch came up. We were going to actually go back to the voters and ask that they allow us to roll it back to one quarter cent, which would have given us enough income. Now, recently, just signed on August the twenty-eighth of last, of this year, and is going into effect now, the county can collect, or has been actually, but now they're going to transfer it to the ESB, has been collecting our sales tax and using it in three areas of the county. They've been using it for law enforcement, roads and bridges, and general revenue for the county. Now, they are obligated with the new law that went into effect to pass through that use tax to the ESB, which will generate about six to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year by estimates of Mr. Cheslick. At that, so we should, at the first of the year, first of January, we are entering into an agreement with the Cass County Commission that that use tax, which does not have to go back to the voters because they've been collecting it ever, well, since day one, since the ESB came into existence, because they passed their use tax in two thousand and eight. So, because this was a countywide tax, they could collect it. And so, now they're going to be passing that directly through to the ESB, so that'll give us a bump, and we're hoping that will allow us to build an additional surplus, if not a surplus, at least allow us to create an environment for an equipment replacement program. And let me explain that real quick. What we would like to do is set aside three to four hundred thousand dollars a year to create an account specifically for the replacement of the handheld radios and the mobile units in each of these entities I told you we initially gave radios to, but had told them specifically in the beginning, we're issuing these now, but from here on out, it's your responsibility for replacement. Everybody signed off on that. Some of the smaller agencies are now in sticker shock, because these pieces of equipment have gone up exponentially along with everything else. I mean, one handheld radio is ten grand. And so, we're hoping that we can, much like you might, you probably have an equipment replacement program here, you don't replace every piece of equipment, but every year you're replacing a piece of equipment that's worn or needs to be replaced, or it's fallen out of warranty or whatever. And that's what, that's the kind of account, we're hoping that not only will we create an operational account that will allow us to maintain the infrastructure, but we will likely be able to create some kind of an equipment replacement program so that you, even the Belton Fire and Police Departments, can invoice the ESB for the replacement of those radios. We won't be able to do them all at once like we did in two thousand and twelve, but we're hoping that over the next ten years, as those age out, we can replace those, and it'll be a seamless transfer of that ability.
It might be in here, I haven't had a chance to read this, but is there a mandatory fund balance for the ESB?
Twenty percent surplus.
Mandatory or maximum, I guess? Mandatory?
Well, we've, it's a policy, it's a maximum that we try to build into the budget every year, is twenty percent surplus.
Okay.
Into the budget.
Thank you.
We've been considering lowering that to seventeen and a half, that's kind of what we did at Raymore, too. I think, I don't, I don't remember what GFOA recommends, it's your finance person here?
She's not tonight.
Go ahead.
And I just have some, this is just clarification for me.
Sure.
Because I looked at the statute that your, that the original ballot language is based on, and the suggested ballot language is in that, and that's section one nine zero point three three five RSMO.
Correct.
And it just says, shall the county of, and in search, impose a county sales tax of, and name the percent, for the purpose of providing central dispatching, fire protection, emergency ambulance service, including emergency telephone services and other services. And that's what the ballot language should substantially be. Was that your understanding?
That was the requirement, in order for us to propose that to the voters of Cass County.
All right. So, in question number one, it exceeds that language and adds on, at least in my understanding of reading this, that at such times, it talks about the, to finance the acquisition, improvement, construction, and equipping of facilities and equipment for such purposes, and that's referring back then to reducing it from the half to an eighth, have been paid in full. But it references doing these things, including facilities and equipment for such purposes. So, and I was here in two thousand and twelve, and I voted on this, and so I do remember these discussions, but I also, for some reason, remember that we talked about having actually a central location, as well as doing the consolidation of the radio. So, it, I think there's just, I understand there's confusion, but the way the ballot language is written in comparison with the statute, and the statute title is just, it says, central dispatch for emergency services. And so, I, I still have a hard time understanding why we're not moving towards not just the consolidation, but the actual physical location.
Okay.
Is there more explanation on that? I know you've said a lot, and I appreciate that, I do appreciate the.
Yeah, no, I, I, I mean, I get it, and, and I have always said, since the issue came up, that if an entity, much like the original entities that went out and pursued the half cent sales tax, wanted to go out and pursue funding under potentially the same issue, because now we can go back up to a half cent, if they wanted to try to do that, albeit, now, we, we, the sheriff did, and I don't know if he told you this, when you guys were talking to him, but the sheriff has always offered up an additional console for fire and EMS, if they wanted to have a particular centralized location for when the, the event is fully fire and EMS related, they could plop a dispatcher there twenty-four seven, and that could be their primary, because the complaint has been from the smaller agencies, and I think from the bigger agencies as well to a certain extent, that because the PSAPs are all located in police headquarters buildings, that there is some perception that fire and EMS are getting secondhand attention. It's not the case. I, I mean, if you go into any dispatch center and talk to a dispatcher, if it's a police call, they bleed blue, if it's a fire call, they bleed red, if it's both, they bleed purple. I mean, they, they just feel that way about the men and women they serve in the dispatch center.
Right. I understand that, and I'm not, I'm not arguing that point with you at all. It's just, I, I think.
Turn your microphone on.
It is on, it is on, I'm just too far away from it.
I'm getting looks, so.
Are you? Okay. Sorry. But I understand what you're saying, and I just, I'm still a little unclear about it, based upon the plain language of the statute and the plain language of the ballot. And I understand what you're saying about we could, since we have the issue now raised on the requirement for the updating of the Motorola system, that maybe that's something we could relook at countywide, as having a centralized location for efficiency and to operate all of the systems.
Yeah, I, I think it deserves a look, I mean, but we've been told by IXP, who was our consultant at the time, that, you know, virtually you guys are centralized, you're consolidated, the only thing you got to get working is this CAD system, and now we have done that.
And was that in two thousand and twelve, or was that the two thousand and twenty-four update?
That was the two thousand and eighteen, that was the two thousand and twenty-four update to Central Square, that was a two thousand and eighteen recommendation by IXP.
And has anything changed with Mark with regard to consolidation, like an actual physical consolidation, or is it still all virtual?
It's still all virtual, yeah. They actually, and, and I, thank you for bringing up Mark, because I was talking to the director the other day, they actually look at Cass County as a model, because many jurisdictions are looking at split locations now, because it's more efficient, that you put together one big bureaucracy, it always adds to the cost of running a central system.
But aren't there continued obligation costs to each of the smaller entities? I understand that the Sheriff's Department has its funding, and we have ours, and Raymore has its, and Pleasant Hill and Harrisonville, but that's a cost to each of the taxpayers in those locations, as well as continuing to pay the county tax?
No, I, I agree. But I think if you put it all into one big building, a forty million dollar building... But I think if you put it all into one big building, a forty million dollar building, it's going to cost a little bit more for a while.
For a while, for a while.
Well, on that note, and sorry, I should.
No, you're fine. Go ahead.
Ah, on that note, um, the, it, the, the other thing I've heard, and I'll just say, you know, it feels like two taxes, right? Because we're, we're, we have that in-house here in Belton. Obviously, I pay taxes for Belton, and then also I pay taxes for the E S B, and now it feels like, you know, we're, we're double dipping on that. And so again, that's why I asked the question of just how do I explain this to the voters? How do I explain this to the taxpayers, right?
Well, as I said before, and I'll say it again, the system that exists today, five entities dispatching for twenty-three, twenty-four other entities, is virtually consolidated, and it, it really is, builds a lot of resiliency and redundancy. You don't have a brick and mortar that have taken out, and even the I X P study said that if you do a brick and mortar, you better have a backup facility, which would likely be the Sheriff's Department, which again would be on the dime of the taxpayers of Cass County. So it'd be the same argument you could make there.
Go ahead.
If, if you put everybody, let's say you have one centralized dispatch, I mean, what are we talking, twenty, twenty-five dispatchers for the whole county?
I don't know, Scotty, what do you, how many do you think that would be, chief? I mean, I know how many we have in Raymore.
Twenty-four between us and county with.
And another ten for Raymore.
Ten, so.
Five or six for Pleasant Hill. Keep in mind, too.
But if you do a, a general, you might not need every, you might, you're probably not going to need the full staff of, say, Belton's got ten, you might only need seven. If you put, if you put everybody into one dispatch. And my other thing is having one centralized dispatch building sets you up for failure, because if anything happens, now you're looking to, you're, you got to put these people somewhere. If we were to do a centralized dispatch, like you're saying, or like they're saying, you, I think you'd want at least two or three different separate buildings to have them in, so that way, if there is a problem with one, you got other places that could fill up the void. Which you're talking at.
We have that now, and to your argument, keep in mind, not all of our dispatchers do just nine-one-one dispatching. There are a lot of other responsibilities that they take on with warrant entry, monitoring the front desk, greeting people at the door. There, there are a lot of responsibilities. You're going to have to replace all of those people with somebody to do those jobs that they're all now doing.
Oh, yeah, for sure. There's, that's not, that's absolutely not lost on me. Typically, there are efficiencies gained when you, you know, have groups, all groups working together, that kind of thing. You know, I don't know, we, we're talking, you know, rough numbers, let's say it's forty-five dispatchers currently across all the P S apps, and that might be a crazy number. I was just kind of going off of it, but. But, you know, assuming we could pare that down when we have some efficiency gains, but I, I don't know. At the end of the day, there's, you know, it's, it's difficult to know. But I guess I go back to the fact that we're having that discussion, the fact that there's even a discussion of, are we centralized dispatch, you know, and what would that look like from a physical standpoint?
But what are you trying to accomplish? You've got a problem with the, the language and the ballot language, but what are you actually trying to accomplish? Are you trying to accomplish a quick and efficient way to provide nine-one-one services to the people in your community? You're doing that. Yet you actually have a degree of institutional knowledge that your dispatchers have of your community. You might not have that in a central system that's built, say, down in Harrisonville.
Well, now, we're, we're changing topics slightly, but I, I agree completely. But part of the reason we have, we as a city recently looked at other opportunities was that those very specific people are in a niche job that aren't easily filled, and is not getting easier to fill. It's also getting more expensive to run, and, and I mean, our own chief said, you know, long term, it's probably not going to be a great sustainable, you know. So just trying to think outside the box and look at opportunities. But that is not this. That was this, that I'm, you know, I'm assuming.
And we could talk other options, too, if, if you want to at some other point.
Yeah.
There are other ideas that, that you can do and potentially save a few bucks. But that, and you could adopt what the sheriff had offered as a console seat for fire and E M S, because you know, so I'm going to get into it just a little bit. All of our dispatchers are E M D qualified. That means they have to go through extensive training in order to provide ongoing care to the patient or the caller at the time that that call is either for fire or E M S beyond law enforcement. So that's a degree of additional training that our dispatchers have that is qualifiable for them to be compensated at the rate they're compensated at. And that's why they have also been termed by the state to be first responders, is because they are so qualified in the job that they do. One of the ways you could do that is relieve them of that job, reduce the number of personnel for your police, and just create a fire and E M S dispatch center specifically for all of fire and E M S in the county. Now, that, is that an E S B responsibility? Hell, no. But, I mean, that's something you could look at.
Yeah, I hear you. We, sure, Belton needs to, and that's what we're doing. We're exploring how to prepare ourselves for the future, right? But, but I think that, you know, I'm assuming the purpose of the, the conversation today was specifically to understand how we explain this, you know, centralized dispatch.
Yeah, the ballot, yeah. I get it. I get it. No, I get it.
Go ahead.
No, I'm, I think about how I want to say it.
When, when we upgraded to Central Square, did we, did Belton pay into that?
Yes.
Okay, so that wasn't funded by your pile of mon, and I'm, I'm not saying a pile of money, but.
The CAD portion was.
Okay, so what did we pay?
Records management and the jail management systems were paid for by your city. We paid for CAD, which included your city.
Okay, so that, that, the other things that we paid for aren't part of the pile of what you do?
No.
Okay, so I'm not from here. I wasn't here when the ballot language happened, although I can tell you I've read it the last couple of days.
I bet.
And I, I, I am very concerned about the construction equipment of facilities, and I am paying, I, I live in Belton. I pay for a tax for my, for a half cent for fire, a quarter cent for police, and then I pay another eight percent of, of virtual group, and I.
For nine-one-one. Remember, it was on your landline.
It's a virtual consolidation.
Right, and nine-one-one. I think that gets lost. It's nine-one-one, really.
Well, I, I'm not arguing that point, but it's very hard for me to explain, especially when you read the ballot language, that we have construction and equipping of facilities. How am I going to explain that to my folks that ask me, you know, we're paying all this money and we're getting a virtual what? So, you know, I still think that that's something that we need to look at as a, you know, I, I don't agree with necessarily what Councilman Richardson said, but I, to me, this says that we have a consolidated facility, nothing virtual about it. And I have, I just have some serious questions, especially when we already know that we're out of room at our police department for dispatch. And we know that they've had to go to Harrisonville because we've had, you know, leaky roofs and whatever. I, I just have to question why you, as a group, with, with the income that you have coming in, are not looking to take that building on. So that, that's just my biggest question, is that, you know, I, I'm a taxpayer. I'm also sitting on the council, and I have plenty of people ask me about taxes, and that, that's my biggest question is, especially when, when we have to address it here. We, I mean, Chief Lyons has already said that this is, we're on borrowed time, and I can't imagine that any of the other communities around us are not in the same situation. And I, I would like to see something other than virtual, I mean, for my money.
Okay.
Going back to that, having one centralized dispatch like they want, there's not enough tax money to pay it if you do countywide for everybody, and to do the upkeep on all the infrastructure. You'd have to bump that up over half cent to probably do the upkeep on that, I would imagine. So, I mean, there's, there's not money there anyway.
I X P did talk about a potential fee structure, should the, the costs overload if you move to a central dispatch system. So it would have to, the sales tax would have to be supplemented somehow, and a fee system would likely be that.
I, I know everybody's saying one centralized dispatch, but I think that sets you up for failure if something were to happen. You don't have a backup. That's me, though. You'd have to have two or three different spots.
Go ahead.
Part of my issue is just clarification of language and clarification of things, and how, how you came up with certain things. That, that's partly what I was thinking about. Because I, I can see both sides, based upon the data, based upon that. Chris, we're in that situation now. When we have an emergency there, we got to have a backup. I mean, no matter what's built, you got to have a backup.
But if you have thirty, twenty-four, thirty people sitting in one spot, where are you going to put them at? You got another building that can take all them? I don't know.
We don't have a building here, so we have to move.
Looking into it, but I'm just, one building sets you, sets yourself up for failure. That's me. Have, have two or three different backups, if that's what you're actually looking for to go down the road, and I'm not against looking at that, but.
Well, if I could, if I could offer one final comment, as I started off, we looked into that, because we were concerned about the same ballot language you all are concerned about. And that's why we went to legal counsel. We got their interpretation. Sorry, buddy, you got to put it on the language, that's that, but when you're out there talking about it, make sure you talk about what you're actually going to do, which is what we did. Went to the Mid-America Regional Council. Mid-America Regional Council says, if you get all accomplished, you're virtually consolidated, same as a central dispatch. We're good to go on that. The nine-one-one board of the state of Missouri, same interpretation. So we've had three major opinions based upon, have we had a judge make the determination? Not yet. I guess that might be the next step, is for the, the ballot language to be challenged in some form or fashion. But the E S B will continue with its mission as it's outlined today.
Yeah, go ahead. One more.
We believe we do. That's why I passed out that chart to you today.
Anybody else?
I have some nitty things, but I, I'd like to have them clarified at another time.
Okay.
You know, just, just the fact that you had a ballot language, but make sure you said what you actually were going to do with it, throws some awful big flags up for me. So, yes.
And I know, I see him waving, but, you know, the fact that you had ballot language and then, but you went out and said what you were actually going to do about it is, is, I have some questions.
Anybody else?
Well, thank you all for having us here this evening. I appreciate your time.
Yeah, I was just going to say thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Thank you very much. Very helpful.
All right, moving on. I'll wait till they get out of here. You're fine. I'm just waiting for you to get out. All right, item F, motion to approve and final reading of bill twenty twenty-five dash fifty-four.
An ordinance amending the city of Belton fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six adopted city budget.
Present.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Lawson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
White? Richardson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Yes.
Pryon?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Mayor Larky?
Aye.
Thompson?
Yes.
Aye, or motion passes. Sorry about that. Item two, motion to approve and final reading of bill twenty twenty-five dash fifty-five.
An ordinance approving an access agreement between the Port Authority of Kansas City and the Belton Fire Department.
Present.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Thought you were going to say something. Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Pryon?
Aye.
Davidson?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
White?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Mayor Larky?
Aye.
Richardson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item G, motion to approve and the first reading of bill twenty twenty-five dash fifty-six.
An ordinance approving a special use permit for an electronic message center sign for Crossroads United Methodist Church at five-one-five East Markey Parkway.
Present.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. You're up.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Before this evening is a request for a special use permit for the installation of a new monument sign with an electronic message center at the Crossroads United Methodist Church at five-fifteen East Markey Parkway. Under the current sign code, a special use permit is required for the installation of any electronic message center or digital sign. Under proposed sign meets all requirements for digital sign, as well as all monument sign requirements, with the exception of a modification to the height. The church's request of the sign height be increased from six feet to seven and a half feet to accommodate the grade change between the church and the street, which the church generally sits lower than the street level. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on September sixteenth, at which no one, at which two members from the church spoke in favor, and nobody spoke in opposition to the request. The commission unanimously recommended approval of the request, and staff also recommends approval of the request.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
No.
Oh, sorry.
There are no other, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but there are in that surrounding area that would likely be potentially affected by the light from a virtu, electronic sign. There's no other housing area that is directly adjacent. Is that correct?
Correct. It's all commercial. Plus, we have lighting standards that are required to be met with the, in terms of the illumination.
How do we check those?
Those are provided for in the plan details that they have to submit to us, and then if we get a complaint, we can always have them,
Okay.
you know, verify that those meet those standards.
Okay.
I have one other question. Are those on twenty-four hours a day? Are they only out, operating hours?
Typically, they are on twenty-four hours a day.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item two, motion to approve and first reading of bill twenty twenty-five dash fifty-seven.
An ordinance approving a special use permit for an electronic message center sign for Lord of Love Lutheran Church at eight-three-zero-six East Hundred and Seventy-first Street.
Present.
Second.
A motion and a second.
Yep, before this is a, a similar request for a special use permit for the installation of an electronic message center. This time, it's an existing monument sign at Lord of Love Lutheran Church at eighty-three oh-six East Hundred and Seventy-first Street, which is just east of the Commerce Bank in Bel Ray. Under the current sign code, it is required to have a special use permit for the installation. The proposed sign meets all requirements for the digital sign. The existing monument sign is thirty-five square feet, which is slightly larger than the current maximum size of thirty-two square feet. However, the size of the digital sign area is only nineteen square feet in size. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on September sixteenth, at which no one spoke in favor or in opposition to the request, and the commission unanimously recommended approval of the request, and staff also recommends approval.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three, motion to approve and resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero seven five.
A resolution approving an amendment to R two thousand and twenty-five dash zero two-one for the Fraternal Order of Eagles to close a portion of Main Street and surrounding side streets, as noted, on October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, for a car cruise.
Present.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Go ahead.
I have a question, Andrea. So I know we approved these as a council. We decided we wanted to do that. Is it a requirement that the requister comes and speaks to the council, or are they just covering their bases when they come in each time to request this?
It's not a current requirement, which I did receive a phone call earlier today from the Fraternal Order of Eagles, and they said that they weren't sure they were going to be able to make it. So I did tell them again, it's not required. We do highly encourage it, because they know the information about their event. And if you were to have questions, it would be better for you to ask them. But I said, I'll be there tonight, and if there's any questions, I'm certainly happy to answer it if I can.
Great, perfect. Thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
I just want to, we heard from them, but just to give another data point, I, too, have gotten questions about October date. So it is certainly something that seems people are interested in, so I don't know why we wouldn't approve it.
The questions I've had is the time. You know, the, the complaints I have had is the time. It's so early in the day. Those are the things that, that, you know, I mean, it's too late now, but those are the things that I've had. The most talked to me about was the, the actual time of the event.
It is the time that they requested for each of these events.
Yep.
You got all winter to work on them.
Yep.
It is something that certainly could be considered next year if they decide they want to do it again. The council could ask them to consider a different time. again. The council could ask them to consider a different time. But, you know, ultimately, whatever they submit is up for your approval.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, motion approving resolution 2025-76.
A resolution authorizing and approving the closure of a portion of Main Street and surrounding side streets, as noted, on December 6th, 2025, for the mayor's Christmas tree lighting.
Present.
Second.
A motion and a second. Go ahead.
I just want to remark on how excellently this application was filled out.
You would expect nothing less, right? And I did want to say earlier, which I forgot, there is a Main Street theater performance that evening at 7:30. So I did reach out to Rob Powell, and he was fine with the application and the closure map as submitted.
Go ahead.
Just a question. Why are we doing a different date from like the parade lighting in that business weekend? I mean, is there a reason we did it later?
That specific date was chosen because the mayor's out of town prior in November, but I will ask him to speak on the rest of that question.
That's why we initially moved it, because I will not be here that weekend that we normally have done in the last two or three years. Why we moved it to that first, I think it's Monday?
Saturday, December 6th.
I can't even remember now, it's been so long. But that's why we moved it, because I won't be in town, so.
Curious.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Five, motion approving resolution 2025-077.
A resolution approving benefits renewal of Aetna Medical Insurance with a 1.99% increase beginning January 1, 2026.
Present.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. You're up.
Okay. For the resolution, it's for the 2026 calendar year renewal for benefits. Aetna came in with a 1.99% increase for medical, zero increase to dental, zero increase to vision. We also did talk at the last council meeting in the work session about the claims. And so it was determined that with the higher utilization, it was recommended that we increase the employee-only premium for the buy-up plan. In the financial considerations, it lists the price that we had discussed previously, that there was an increase total for the year, $71,830. And then to the City of Belton, it's $51,269. With the decrease price, though, because we looked at long-term disability life insurance and the FSA, it's a decrease of 20% on those. So a $27,888 per year savings with a three-year rate guarantee for long-term disability, and with the FSA minimal savings, but it is a four-year rate guarantee for that. So the net increase for the year, $23,028. So the staff recommendations is what I mentioned, the increase of, it is a 47% increase to the employee-only plan for the buy-up plan. Everything else would stay the same. And then there is a slight adjustment to the high deductible plan, HSA contribution, to come in line with that. And then, of course, changing those vendors to the standard insurancy. Any questions?
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, motion approving resolution 2025-078.
A resolution approving the contract with David E. Ross Construction Company for the wastewater treatment plant clarifier number two mechanism replacement.
Present.
Second.
A motion and a second. You've been awful quiet today.
Sorry, it's kinda hard to follow everything that's been in front of me this evening. I don't have a song or dance or anything for you. This is our second clarifier. As you know, we have three clarifiers at the plant. Clarifiers are what takes the water, slows it down, and as water slows down in its motion, particulate falls out of it, so you end up with clean water. That's the name of clarifier. Last year, we replaced clarifier number one. Now we're gonna replace clarifier number two. When we bid this clarifier, you'll notice that we only got one bid from one person. We had several people look at it, but most people believe, once you own one model, you're gonna want that same model installed for the other two, which is pretty much correct. We didn't want to end up with three. The same person installed the last one, has bid this one, given us a good price for it. So normally, we recommend something with one bid, but this, we will recommend with just one bid. Inside the contract, we've also added a paragraph in there where we can actually rehire them for next year, negotiate a price for them next year, and that way we can complete all three. And that way, all three clarifiers will be completely rebuilt and redone. This is something that is in our budget, and it's been planned, and it's something that's really needed for the plant. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any que, go ahead.
Just curious, how long do they last after?
Well, they should last between 20 and 30 years. So they should last a good long time.
You said should.
You know, anything can happen.
Even I know the answer to that. Depends what you flush.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Each consent agenda, one motion not available to approve, recommendations noted, any member of the council may ask for an item to be taken from the consent agenda for discussion in separate action. Present.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Communication from City Council, Councilmember Johnson.
Um, I don't think I have anything today.
All right, I can stall for him.
I'll take over.
Councilmember Richardson.
I got nothing. Allison, you're up.
So, my-
Councilmember McCow.
My family and I stopped at the National Night Out for the first responders, and it was a lot of fun. It's a really great event, and it was great to see everybody out there. And maybe even cooler was the fact that there was just a really good response from the community. Like, I, I mean, just like last year and the previous, I mean, it's just really cool to see everybody come out and support our first responders. So, just really glad that that event went well. I also just gotta give a shout out to the chamber. They did a glow-in-the-dark trap-and-skeet shoot, which was, I participated in, it was a lot of fun. Way, way harder than I anticipated. I knew it was gonna be hard, but holy crap, it's way harder when you can't see the end of your barrel. Anyways, I also got to meet one of our high school shooters, who is currently ranked fourth in the state, so I just wanted to say, go Belton. The TDD Board, update for the TDD Board is tomorrow, is our normal monthly meeting, so I don't have an update at this time. And then for parks, adding to the list of upcoming events, I know I mentioned some last council meeting, and so I'm gonna add to that list. There is a, speaking of glow-in-the-dark, that's just the theme now, there's a glow-in-the-dark disc golf tournament called Chills and Chains, that'll be on October 24th. There is a teddy bear fair on November 1st, which will be at High Blue, and that's in a, it's a new event. Should be fun for kids. They bring their bears, and then they get to visit the dentist, and the library, and the doctor, and things like that. There's a stream cleanup occurring at Cleveland Lake on November 1st. So, you know, anyone interested in volunteering for that, I will remind you, there's free hot dogs, like there normally is. And then, and then the Junior Holiday Craft Show will be coming back. That's where all the vendors are from, between the ages of eight and 18, and that'll be on November 15th at High Blue. And then, just really awesome, great news out of parks, they were recently awarded a grant for a very expensive new playground at Wallace Park. So that's gonna get a much-needed upgrade, and they're hoping that will be done in the springtime of 2026. So, that's everything.
I got nothing.
Nothing?
I have nothing.
I was able to go to the open house for Hard and Hand on Saturday and see all the nice improvements they have done. If you get a chance, visit.
I have a couple things. This last weekend, we had a little over 100 people ride the train on two different days, and the majority of them that rode on Sunday had never been to Belton before. We had 57 people that rode the train on Sunday, and the majority of them had not been to Belton before. They were very excited about our town, which makes me very excited. And I want to say, Belton, my Belton app works tremendously well. Whatever the clarifier costs, I'm good with. Wastewater responded timely, and I appreciate it, and good job to all those guys.
I don't have anything right now.
All right. The only thing I got is reminder that next month, or the meeting in November 11th will be moved to Monday, November 10th because of the Veterans Holiday.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I have three things. One, I would like to take this moment, since we're talking about stormwater or sewer infrastructure with the clarifier, to remind everybody who's watching that there is no such thing as a flushable wipe. I know that they're advertised as flushable wipes, but there is literally no such thing as a flushable wipe. Any of those wipes cause havoc on your, on the sewer infrastructure, and if you flush it in your own house, it's gonna cause havoc on your own service line and your lines in your house. And so I would just advise nobody to use those, at least don't flush them around the toilet. All right, no such thing. The other two things is we did do, we did have a dumpster day over, I believe it's somewhere on Trails, a couple weekends ago, had three dumpsters almost full of stuff that was taken away from that neighborhood. We went in before the neighborhood and gave some recommendations to the, to the area as to what needed to be done for code enforcement, and then we gave them some resources to kinda help comply. So, we will, we think it was very successful, and we will look forward to doing that again in other neighborhoods in our community. And the last thing is that the streets project is essentially completed, so I hope everybody, realizing we couldn't get to every street, and we don't have the resources to keep every street completely up to, up to par, but we did do a very large project this year, and all of those are now completed. And we actually had a little bit of money left over in the budget, budgeted amount, to add a street to that, which was Emerson. We added that from Catrin to Cambridge. And so, that's all done. So, we will be doing a, kind of a drone flyover of some of the project and what was done, and just kinda pointing it out to everybody, you know, kinda what went into that. That's the taxpayer dollars at work. So that's all I've got.
Anybody else? Item, oh, items for review and discussion. Number 173rd Cunningham Right-of-Way Vacation.
Yes, staff has prepared a request to vacate excess right-of-way at the northeast and northwest corners of 173rd Street and Cunningham Parkway. I did email everybody out and exhibit with the maps of those locations this afternoon. The northeast corner was previously the location of Cunningham Parkway, and the northwest corner was the area that was previously platted for East 173rd Street. However, since the right-of-way was never completed, the approved plans in 2023, realigned the intersection to accommodate the 173rd Street extension and making it the through street instead of Cunningham Parkway. The Planning Commission held a public hearing last Tuesday evening, at which one of the two adjacent property owners expressed opposition to the request due to the impact on his access. Staff recommended to postpone the public hearing to discuss further with Public Works and the city attorney on the history of the project and how the right-of-way was determined. And we're still working through those details. And once those have been worked out, we'll notify the adjacent property owners again and re-notice the public hearing for Planning Commission, and then that recommendation will be brought forward to council at a later date.
Questions? Hearing none, item two, Main Street Civic Center Final Plat.
Yep, we've also prepared a final plat for Main Street Civic Center, which would accommodate consolidation and replat of 16 original town lots and a 60-foot of vacated street right-of-way into three lots to accommodate the old city hall, the existing city hall and the city hall annex. Each would be on individual lots. This replat is part of the ongoing effort to ensure that city-owned properties are in compliance with zoning and the subdivision regulations. An additional plat will also be brought forward in the near future. For one parcel, it'll be split into three parts, into three lots to accommodate Wallace Park, the police station, and fire station, too. Having clean and clear legal descriptions for each lot also makes it easier to lease or sublease properties, as well as when requesting grants and other agreements for improvements, which typically include a legal description as an exhibit. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the final plat last Tuesday, and that will be brought forward to council on November 10th for recommendation.
Any questions? Item three, enterprise leasing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. I will, let's see if I can, maybe.
Is your staple drawn, too?
Okay.
There we go.
Okay. So I apologize for the staples. That is no indication of the program itself, rather just the fact that I don't know how to operate our copy machine back here in the annex. Wanted to give the council an opportunity to take a look at a program that we've been evaluating for the programs here within the annex, so economic development, the city clerk's office, and community development, as well as recently just started conversations with our emergency management director. The Enterprise Fleet Program, if you're not familiar, provide a full fleet management program for both private and government organizations. And before I get really kind of into the details and invite Brandon up from Enterprise to talk a little bit about the program, I wanted to kinda just briefly talk about how we got to kinda this portion, or today, into the resolution that the council will see in a couple of weeks. So, I'm sure council is familiar, probably the last six, nine months or so, we've had discussions about how the OTS program has continuously outpaced what we've been able to budget in terms of providing that service for our seniors at the senior center. At the same time, the economic development van, which was about five years old, was not really getting any use to the point of where we were having maintenance issues because it was not being used. And so we saw an opportunity there to put some maintenance dollars into the vehicle, and then allow the senior center to use that vehicle with staff to provide rides to and from the senior center. While the senior center, I think, has successfully been using that minivan for transportation, there have been some items that have come up in terms of the way the van, the chassis itself is a little bit higher than some of the minivans that are produced today, or some other minivan options, as well as that middle bench in the middle of the minivan doesn't really allow for a whole lot of accessibility. And so, there's some things that we can do a little bit differently. And so, that started the conversation. Roughly about the same time, Neighborhood Improvement had a position that was primarily based in the office, that we then turned into a field position. And so this gave us, at the time, it was two full-time field neighborhood improvement officers plus three building inspectors. Because of that change to the addition of the field officer, we are short one vehicle in Neighborhood Improvement. And so, for about the past year, we've had two officers who share a vehicle, or will go out and patrol together in that vehicle, and we've still been down that one vehicle. And so we've identified a need there. And at the same time, our, we've shifted some of our duties from our building official and our planning staff, where also taking some of their in-office duties and giving them some more responsibilities to do some inspections, whether it's like the landscaping inspections, as well as some other items on building projects. And so, again, we have a need for a vehicle, and while we've been able to shift and kind of coordinate as best we can, really the need right now, at least in these three departments, is kind of a basic minimum need of about three new vehicles or three vehicles, so that we can kind of give folks the ability to go to the inspection, so that we can fully accommodate the transportation needs at the senior center, and also to allow our two neighborhood improvement officers who are sharing a vehicle, the opportunity to have their own vehicle, and kinda go throughout the community as needed. Like I said, here recently, also, emergency management, we've begun the discussion of, there is definitely a need for a new vehicle, but at the same time, also the possibility of a Sprinter van for supplies and other things that future volunteers or future programming. And so we just started laying the groundwork. I don't have a vehicle specifically in mind, just like I said, because those conversations have just started. All of these needs have kind of come together in the last year and really started and allowed us to facilitate a discussion on, how do we best manage our fleet in several departments who really don't have, you know, a large fleet? Even with the vehicles, we do have here currently fairly small fleet of SUVs. No upfittings are required, and really, it's just kind of standard vehicles we've used in the past. Unlike Public Works, or the Police Department, that has an awful lot of upfittings, this program may not necessarily be a good fit for them because of those upfittings and heavy truck, heavy equipment and other specifications. But for us in the white fleet in the annex, we really started a- But for us in the white fleet in the annex, we really started to look at how Enterprise could help us. And so I wanted to ask Brandon, just real quick, to kind of talk a little bit about the Enterprise Fleet Management Program as a whole. And then I want to come back and talk a little bit about how the program itself and what we're kind of envisioning when it comes to this fiscal year budget, but also in future, for future planning of the budget. So I'll just give it to you. You just kind of scroll down.
Yeah, very good. Thanks, Mike. Brandon Scott been with Enterprise for 17-plus years now. And in 2015, nationwide as a company, our Fleet Management Division had about 1,000 government clients, cities, counties, school districts nationwide. Today, we have over 2,500 cities, counties, school districts. And when I started in this division in 2018, December of 2018, we had six in the Western Third of Missouri and then all of Kansas. That was our offices' territory. Today, we have over 100. So have started partnerships with quite a few different cities, county, school districts. And if it wasn't more cost-effective and wasn't operationally sound, we'd have a really tough time maintaining our current client base, let alone experiencing the growth that we've had thus far. So most people are familiar with Enterprise National Alamo, sometimes car sales, sometimes truck rental. We're kind of the best-kept secret of the whole umbrella of enterprise companies out there. We're really successful because you get to leverage economies of scale and scope and, but we also provide you a lot of information, a lot of data. So I always tell people, hey, think of us as a financial advisor, but for your fleet of vehicles. We're simply trying to buy low, sell high, time the market and leverage your government bid assistance to ultimately do what's best for the taxpayers and, you know, the municipalities that we partner with. So a lot of our companies and municipalities that we partner with didn't want to wait for us to push information to them. They wanted to be able to pull that data at their leisure. So we've developed a really robust website where you can go on and log in and look at different graphs and charts and, and different metrics to be able to better analyze your own fleet. These are just some of our clients. Again, Western Third of Missouri and then all of Kansas have partnered with Mike when he was at the City of Raymore, also at the City of Blue Springs, a couple there, but just a handful of our, our partnerships on there. So we have the ability to help from acquisition all the way through resale. Every partnership is structured a little bit differently in terms of what you need and what you don't. So we've already kind of identified some of the programs that would be best used with the City of Belton. Acquisition, resale, license, title, registration, renewals, maintenance, and then telematics. So kind of opting into what you want and opting out of what you don't. And this is not only customizable by the partnership as a whole, but by departments. So, you know, if down the line, Public Works and/or PD and/or Fire wants to opt into acquisition and resale through us, but they want to handle their own aftermarket equipment, no problem. We can absolutely do those things. So what we're trying to do is we're, a pretty simple illustration here, but you drive a truck off the lot. It's worth less than it was 10 minutes prior at some point, whether it's a, you know, 10, 15, 20, 25-year-old vehicle. You're not losing much value because you've already lost most of its value to that point. And so what we're trying to do is obviously the longer you hold vehicles, the more you're going to pay in gas and certainly the more you're going to pay in maintenance. And so we're trying to find that optimal time to replace every vehicle that's in your fleet before you lose too much value and before your operating expenses rise. So this is constantly a moving target. We have found that the more brand agnostic, if you will, that our clients can be, the more you can pivot and maximize the results of this partnership. Because the manufacturers change their strategy every year in terms of how much they give from a front-end government bid assistance standpoint. Ford, you know, used to give four, five, six, seven, eight, nine grand off the front end to some of these vehicles. And then they shifted and then, you know, after COVID, they went to, from nine grand off an F-250 to 500 bucks. And that totally shifts the, the metrics of all of this. And so again, financial advisor for your fleet of vehicles. And so, you know, Chevy was pretty consistent throughout the pandemic in terms of the amount of government bid assistance that they got or that they're giving. Ram has been very aggressive over this last year. Toyota has come in, you know, a lot of the Tundras are built in San Antonio, Texas. So, you know, it, it helps them avoid some of the tariffs and those additional costs. And so it's really interesting when you start to analyze which vehicles are built in the U.S., which are built abroad. What are going to be affected by tariffs? What's happening with the new model year increases? What the front-end incentives are going to be? And it's very different year to year. So that's a huge advantage that we provide to our clients is diving into all that information and then ultimately telling you what's going to be most cost-effective. And at the end of the day, it's your choice. So if you're like, hey, no Ford only, or we're Chevy only, we don't really care. We don't, we're not married to any one of the manufacturers. We partner with all of them. So this is just an example of how this works. We have some clients that are cap, that have very strong capital budget positions. And so they'll pay cash for vehicles through our program. That is not a problem. I've got two different examples here. This is an example of a $42,000 vehicle. In your traditional finance, in this example, over the course of four years, you'd finance it down to zero. Fast forward four years, you know, we order a new vehicle to replace it. We sell that vehicle for 22.5 and give you a check for 22.5. And a new vehicle to replace it, reset the maintenance cycle. On the left side, what the majority of our municipalities will take advantage of is our open-ended lease or equity lease. Typically, people hear the word lease and they cringe a little bit, but this is more like a finance to a residual than it is your traditional dealership type of lease. So there's no fixed term. There's no fixed mileage. These are work trucks. They're gonna come back with dents, dings, scratches. We know that. And so what we typically do is finance it down to a residual. In this example, $10,000. So you conserve some capital budget, some cash flow savings throughout. Fast forward four years, we sell this vehicle for 22.5 and we give you the difference between 22.5 and $10,000. So that $12,500 of equity goes back to the City of Belton with the new vehicle to replace it. And you've conserved some capital budget dollars throughout to be able to help you replace a large, much larger portion of your fleet than you would have, you know, had you just paid cash for vehicles, which again, you can still do if you're in a strong capital budget position. No problem. From a resale standpoint, this is really where we make our hay is you've got Kelley Blue Book, which measures the sale of retail vehicles. We grade ourselves against Black Book, which is the sale of commercial vehicles nationwide. The reason we're successful is because we sell a small portion at auction, but we wholesale the super majority of our vehicles directly back to dealers. You cut out, you know, just a finite amount of, of people at an auction in a finite amount of time and you open it up nationwide. So we've got 19,000 different buyers that we're wholesaling vehicles back to. And our sales folks are graded on two things, sales price and time. And so their incentive is to get you top dollar as quickly as possible. And, you know, when there's hurricanes or floods or fires, a lot of times you'll see the transport trucks on the road are actually moving vehicles to be sold in those locations because insurance companies may be, you know, paying a premium to get their insureds back driving vehicles. So we have the infrastructure. We may say, hey, you know, Mike, it's going to cost an extra $1,000 to move it from here to Houston. But we anticipate you're going to get an extra three grand in resale. You know, what do you want to do? And so we're again collaborating with you throughout the process. Trying to do two things with your fleet. I'm trying to find the right type of vehicle for the job and then we're trying to find how long to hold it. This is constantly a moving target. So part of the reason why we meet with you two, three, four times a year, depending on the cadence that you want, is to identify what's the right tool for the job. You know, is it a small pickup truck, half-ton, three-quarter ton, one-ton? And then it is Ford, Chevy, Ram, Toyota, Nissan. From there, how long do we anticipate we should hold it? This is like, I want you to think of this like a 30-year mortgage. You're not locked into your 30-year mortgage. You're going to pay your principal down over time. At any point in that 30 years, I pay my principal down. After five years, I sell my house here. Yes, I got to pay off the bank, but that chunk of equity belongs to me. So similar deal is we may come to you two years into a four-year term and say, hey, you've paid your principal down here over the next year or two or three or four. Here's what we anticipate those maintenance expenses to be. Here's what we anticipate that resale to be. Here's what we anticipate the cost of a new vehicle to be. And we're identifying all this information with you, you know, a couple, at least a couple of times a year. So you can ultimately make, you know, the most educated decision for you and your taxpayers. Couple different maintenance programs, happy to dive into. I don't want to take up too much of your time. I know I've had a long evening already, but full maintenance, we've got a fixed and budgeted maintenance program. We've got a pay-as-you-go program as well. Happy to talk through that. But we've got, you know, nine different shops that you can take your vehicles to here in Belton that are already on the program if you're not already doing some of that in-house. Provide you a lot of data, you know, kind of like I talked about, mobile app, customer website that you have the access to. Everybody may want to look at some different graphs and charts, operations, may want to look at something different than finance, which wants to look at something different than leadership. So you can customize this for sure across the board. And then I'm going to pass it back to Mike and kind of have him walk you through. There's certainly lots of different types of vehicles and this is not the only one. But the Ford Maverick has done very well over the last couple of years. So have Mike kind of walk you through this.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And so to kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at for a specific vehicle and what, you know, what council will be seeing in a couple of weeks is it's the resolution to join the program. We still will want to select specific vehicles and those will continue to come to council as they have in the past for those individual, individual vehicles like they have. And so really, I just wanted to give you a quick example of kind of how this is a little bit different. And so typically what we think of when we purchase a vehicle, we, we really just look at that one vehicle acquisition price. You know, how much is it going to cost me to buy this vehicle? You know, we're buying either off a state contract or source well or through a bid process. And so really what we're doing is we're assuming here, and this is what Enterprise's vehicle acquisition price is, is at $42,000 for that 2025 Ford Maverick. Now, this is one of the vehicles that we've identified in Neighborhood Improvement that we think would be a good fit. And so traditionally, vehicle acquisition, we'd hold onto that vehicle for as long as we could until we essentially depreciated it down to zero or it completely fell apart and, and we decided we finally needed to trade it in. Through the program, what we're able to do is we take that vehicle acquisition and Enterprise is going to be able to give us a monthly lease of $638 for that vehicle. Now, if we were to go to a maximum lease term of 60 months, that means we're going to be paying about $38,000 for not just the vehicle, but we're also getting acquisition services, resale services, maintenance, maintenance on the fuel efficiency and maintenance efficiency monitoring, plus the GPS tracking, which none of our vehicles here in the annex at least have currently. And so while I, I don't necessarily want to call the $3,700 a savings, it's not a huge savings in comparison to, you know, right now, we're talking about a need of about $150,000 in vehicles. In terms of the lease, what we're looking at is we're getting a lot of services. Plus, we're saving a little bit on what we would ultimately have to pay for that vehicle right out of the beginning. Now, on top of that, a part of the program and what Brandon talked about is, you know, the expected sale price of that vehicle. And this is part of that moving target. Currently, they're projecting that vehicle at the end of that 60 months to be about $14,700. If we were to sell at that, at that price, we would get a check back for $11,528. And there's two ways that we can use that revenue. We can either bank it. If we were to have like a traditional vehicle and equipment replacement fund, you bank that and use that for future equipment or other vehicle leases or projects. Or they're able to apply that to the future lease cost. And so let's say we get that $11,500 back in equity at the end of the term. Instead of us paying 638, maybe that drops down another 150 or 200 on the next vehicle that we, we select as part of this program. And so it really is from start to finish, you know, Enterprise, as Brandon mentioned, is a partner through this whole process. So we're looking at acquisition pricing. We're looking at what it costs to maintain that vehicle. Plus, we're looking at, you know, the kind of that third point of that, that data point is what could we actually get in terms of equity payment at the end of this program? And so we're looking at our entire fleet really as, as kind of an asset that moves along with us through the lifetime of both the vehicle as well as the program. Full disclosure, as Brandon mentioned, so I have activated programs at the City of Raymore and the City of Blue Springs, very similarly with Enterprise. Definitely some lessons learned. And I think it's going to be really smart, the way that staff here has approached this as like a smaller pilot program, trying to get, start at least this year with three vehicles that we're able to get into the program. The hope is, as we're going through the budget process, we can continue to budget for other vehicles within the Neighborhood Improvement, Community Development Office, as well as including Emergency Management. And then we can just kind of continue to see if the program is successful and it's working from us, for us, then we can continue to grow or we just keep it at the, at the size it is here in the annex, just to continue to use our data and best information we can for projects like this. Happy to answer any questions about the program itself or any of the other details about what you might be seeing here in the coming weeks.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Do we put, do we mark our vehicles as like Belton?
So we have vehicles marked in, not here in the annex. So the hope is we'd be able to.
Like I know Public Works does, but I guess my question is, do we?
Yeah. My hope is that with the newer vehicles, we'd be able to, to brand them with the neighborhood. So the Neighborhood Improvement would have the Community Development logo, the city logo. And then if the senior center had any interest in branding that vehicle, we'd be able to do that as well.
And that's not a problem for Enterprise, right? Because we're either just slapping on a magnet or a vinyl or something like that. Okay. And then, um, I lost my train of thought. I don't know.
Go ahead.
So the, the $42,000, the, is the initial cost of that vehicle that you're going to do the lease of the 638 a month?
Right. So that would be if we were to just purchase that vehicle outright.
Right.
Yeah, that's that 42,000. Instead, what we would do is that 638 monthly lease as part of the program.
And at the end of the five years?
Correct.
It's only valued at 14,000, depending on miles?
Right. And, and again, kind of as Brandon mentioned, if we get two years into it, and this was, this is the example that I had with our community development, our building inspectors in Raymore, was we actually purchased or we leased F-250s for all the inspectors. And after one year, Enterprise came back to us and said, those F-250s have actually gone up in price. And so if you sell them now after one year, we were able to get the entire next year's lease on the new vehicle paid for just based on that equity payment.
I was, I was just looking up kind of what they, what they brought brand new and it looked like their, their MSRP is around 32, 34. But maybe I'm missing something, but.
Yeah, I, I'm happy to look, look that up. Yeah, this, I think that was just taken from the example. Certainly happy to look at.
And I kind of just went back to see what like a 2020 would bring. And it's 18 to 20.
Yeah.
Going back five years. So I'm just pulling numbers just to kind of see.
Yeah, we'd much rather underpromise and over-deliver on the results. So yeah, I mean, if, if we're going to get you the top dollar regardless. So really, our goal is to, to maximize that resale value. So I'd rather tell you it's going to sell for 14.7 in five years and then.
So to get the maximum resale value, Ford's the best option?
For the small pickup category, yes. The, the Ford Maverick is. For SUVs, we're looking at Toyota 4Runners. For minivans, it's a Toyota Sienna. For, you know, it's, it's different.
I was going to say mostly Toyota or Honda is usually your best resale.
Yeah, resale, yeah. Yeah, from front end, I just put together some other Mavericks for a different client. And yeah, I think they, they came in at an initial cost of 30, 33,000 and change, depending on how you spec it out. But.
Right.
Part, a, a big part of this is identifying, we may, you know, the cheapest on state contract, we can get you all day, every day, no problem. Many times, we'll steer you towards a more expensive vehicle because if a, you know, Maverick sells, you know, if it costs 33 grand, but a Chevy Colorado costs 38, that's a difference in $5,000 on the front end. If the Colorado sells for six grand more on the back end, from a total cost of ownership standpoint, we'd steer you towards a Colorado all day because it's going to lower your total cost of ownership. So this is just one example. We'll bring specific numbers, no problem.
So three makes a fleet. I'm just curious. It's such a low need. I'm just curious.
Yeah, I would say three is, that's what we're starting with. So yeah, I think the, the idea would be to work with the different department heads. And if police wants to have a discussion, if Public Works wants to have a discussion, great. If not, you know, happy to work with Parks and Rec, Emergency Management. You know, we're not here to force you into a certain amount of vehicles in your fleet. We don't mandate a certain percentage. Our belief is that we're going to provide you value. And if we don't, then you'll go back to doing what you were doing. If we do provide you value, you'll keep ordering vehicles from us. So I think it's just a good starting point based on what's in the budget for this current fiscal year. And then, you know, starting budget discussions for this next fiscal year, you know, trying to get into some of those conversations is where we, where we want to be.
I'm assuming that's where those economies of scale come into play.
Go ahead.
Yeah, our thought process on this is to, there, there are a lot of cities have gone to this. They found value there. And so they said, okay, we want to do this. I'm very skeptical. So I'm like, okay, let's see how this works.
I'm very skeptical. So I'm like, okay, let's see how this works. We can do it with a few vehicles. That way, if we're only in three vehicles and we decide we don't want to do this in the future, it's not going to be a huge pull for us to turn around and just buy three vehicles in the future, right? We can, we can take that in. Now, if we went to all of our vehicles and went into this, this type of process, then we wanted to replace, you know, we want to get out of this type of process and just buy vehicles outright, that's a bigger pull, right? And so we're just piloting this and, and seeing if it does provide us the value that we, that they're saying it will. And, and if it does, then maybe we'll add more and maybe, like, like you said, maybe we'll go big and, or maybe we'll just stay at a s, small amount and just keep it, keep it at that level.
What else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item N, I'd entertain a motion entered executive session, discuss matters tending to legal actions according to Missouri State Statute 610.021.1 at the record, we cause an immediate adjournment from there. Present.
Second.
A motion of second, any discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Mayor Larky?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Pryon?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Richardson?
Aye.
McCallum?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Thompson?
Yes.
Davidson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Standing adjourned.